Good evening, everyone. Ready or not, we're starting. Can I please have a motion to open the joint work session with the Town Board and the Planning Board?
I move to open the joint work session with the Planning Board and Town Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, is there a motion to open our meeting here with the three of us?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Dick Brownell is going to be appearing, I believe, remotely. He's not quite there yet. We have some times, we have some issues. And then Eldad will be here in a few moments, and I think Sabrina will be joining us around 7:15.
Perfect. So, welcome, everyone who's watching, and welcome to the Planning Board again. I want to thank you guys. We're seeing an awful lot of you, and we love it. Because I think this is a great way to work together. I really do.
I like the first part. I wonder about whether you really love it.
I do, I do. So, before we got started, I wanted to just give a few words to anybody who's watching and kind of to frame it. So, we are here again tonight to continue our joint work on the proposed zoning legislation that would facilitate what I think we all believe is an exciting proposal for development of the vacant right-of-property. The project would replace the beautiful, empty, and dilapidated building that's there now with forty-five residential apartments and a diner on the ground floor. I want to thank all of you on the Town Board and the Planning Board for all the work that you've put in, and I know will continue to put in, on this legislation. For those of you watching, we held a joint work session on January tenth, and we're having another one tonight. We may also have another one in the future. But we appreciate all of your efforts. So, before we begin, I wanted to just set the stage with a few thoughts. I think this is important work, and we just had Senator Harkam come talk to us about the proposed 2024 budget. You know, we have a housing shortage in Westchester and throughout New York State. Here in Newcastle, our comprehensive plan, which we updated in 2017, did recognize the need to create more housing opportunities for empty nesters, seniors, young professionals, and low-to-middle-income households centered around our hamlet. So, how do we do this? So, the town was against establishing a form-based code for the Chappaqua hamlet. We heard that from voters, we heard that from many, many, many residents, and I personally have no desire to resurrect that. But rather, I think we need to look at what makes sense for individual parcels while keeping the needs and wants of our community in mind. Again, we also need to keep this proposed 2024 state budget in mind. It includes what's called the New York Housing Compact. If enacted, it would redesign the land use approval process in New York, which would allow the state, in certain circumstances, to actually override local zoning laws. It would have far-reaching impacts on every city and village in New York State. As currently proposed, it would require Newcastle to increase our housing stock by three percent every three years. And it also incorporates transit-oriented development, which would require that we undertake a local rezoning of higher-density multifamily units within a half-mile radius of the train station here. And if we don't do this again, the state will be able to come in and override our zoning while granting specific relief from environmental review. For various reasons, most municipalities, I believe, are fighting this proposed legislation. But I also think it's incumbent upon us to think toward the future, because increasing housing is obviously a laudable goal. But if I had my druthers, I wanted to do it the way that makes sense for our community instead of being told later on how we need to do that. I think we also need to look toward the future on an environmental front. We should be proud of what we do here in Newcastle. We were the very first municipality in New York State to become an environmental conservation, climate-smart community, and we had the highest designation there. And we recently adopted the New York State Stretch Code, so we certainly, you know, have the goal of sustainability and the environment in mind. Also, the New York State Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act requires by 2030, seventy percent of the statewide electric generation be generated by renewable energy systems, and by 2040, that number is a hundred percent. So, the fact that we could potentially have a net-zero building, I think, is exciting and really put us on the map in Westchester, certainly. So, tonight, we're going to be talking about your preliminary draft referral memorandum on the proposed zoning legislation. So, your memo is, the draft memo is great, and it provides input on kind of granular level and then also big-picture policy level. So, I'm sort of suggesting that we start on that big-picture level and then work our way to granular. So, in my view, I think there are basically three things we should focus on tonight. The first being the special permit. And should that be, can we keep it as a special permit as proposed? Do you want to use an overlay zone or some other form? And are we going to broaden the scope of that at all? The second being talking about parking. Our parking standards, as you well know, date back to the 1970s. Preliminary calculations are suggesting that as few as five off-site spots might be needed. Now, again, we need to look at this. But our train station alone could yield twenty-five to a hundred additional spots with some relatively simple changes. So, I want to talk about that. And then, obviously, if and when we adopt the legislation, the applicant will still need to satisfy whatever parking standards we put in there in order to obtain approval for the project. And then, third, just talking about changing the application procedure and having joint public hearings with the Planning Board. As you probably all know, we have eighteen other special-use permits currently in our Newcastle Town Code. It's not unusual. Some are even for single properties. Here, the Planning Board would actually have a greater role in site plan approval than it's typical for a special permit. And like the PDCP process, we've never done that, I believe, for any other project other than Chappaqua Crossing, which obviously is on a much greater scale and incorporates many more different intricacies. So, with that in mind, I think, why don't we start talking about those big-picture items? And maybe the best place, unless you think, Bob, that there's another place you want to start, I would propose just starting with one and talking about the use of the special permit and your thoughts on that.
Sure. And again, this is a draft memo. So, it's still subject, we're going to be talking about this again, I think, next week at our meeting. So, it's still subject to negotiation, discussion, you know, education, frankly, feedback, persuasion, whatever you want to call it. So, it is just a draft. We've worked on it, you know, fairly carefully. But these were the major concerns, and of course, as Lisa mentioned, there are a number of smaller concerns, you know, site issues that are, you know, the lower things. They're drilling down. So, the issue in terms of, it's, I think, actually, one and two are sort of related because I think they flow together. And I think the issue in terms of the mechanism is, again, dealing with, I guess, the planning in terms of what happens in this area. And I think our concern really, I don't know if you can really separate the two. The issue is, I think, one of really equity in terms of what happens. You know, are we, is there the possibility of overstretching the capacity of other property owners? And if that is a concern and a valid concern, then it seems to me that, and just me at this point, that one of two things would happen. Either the scale of the project gets scaled back or we really, you know, look at this and understand very closely, carefully, what the impacts might be. So, I think, you know, again, we're proposing that we, if off-site parking is necessary, in order to look at off-site parking, we really need to have a good understanding of what the parking capacity is, future as well as present. If that's not involved, I don't think there's much need for that at all. So, the issue to me, it seems, is the mechanism is, you know, okay as long as we have understanding that the impact is not one where it's going to disturb the property rights of others in the future. So, I don't know really how you really break those apart because I think one and two are really important and are interwoven. So, those are my thoughts on it. My sense is that with understanding, we'll know better whether or not this is, and we see this frequently, I think we see this nationwide, locally as well, that an applicant is looking to stretch things and get, you know, maximize the use of the parcel. And the issue for us, I think, is to make certain that this is not an overstretch where the capacity is being stretched to the point where it's exceeding the, shall we say, the development capacity and the zoning capacity of this particular parcel in the context of where it's located. And so, that, you know, very often, we see that. I mean, that's what a developer should do. They want to maximize and see what they can get. Clearly, the, just from the get-go, it's a request for, you know, more than the two-story current zoning and whatever the current parking is. So, we know that it's a stretch over what we normally look at. So, it's just how much of a stretch and what are those impacts? So, I think, you know, if you're going to have an issue with off-site parking and the study says we need to figure out different things and different approaches and different strategies, we talked about last time freeing up some parking behind, you know, off by the station, which I thought was a terrific idea, and how that all works. I think that's, I think there's opportunity to make this work and to see how it works. But I think we need that information.
Can I ask a question in terms of the mechanism? With the mechanism, does that mean an overlay zone versus a special permit? And how differentiating between those two things would affect your concern, which is parking?
You know, an overlay, obviously, is, the problem with the overlay at this point is I think it becomes more of a burden on the applicant because it slows things down. We have a much broader area, and we're cognizant of that. And, you know, this is a site, I think it's exciting to think of this site as being developed because what it is now is very unexciting. So, that's important. But I think, I don't think the mechanism, if we anticipate, well, let's put it this way. If we go with the current proposal, the legal question I have for Ed, and I've had this for Jennifer, is what would stop another applicant in anywhere in this district from coming forward with the same sort of application, with the same ask? And what will the town, where will the town's position be at that point in terms of answering that request? If, in fact, the off-site parking has been exhausted or really compromised, what do we say to that other applicant? And I think that is a basic fairness issue, a basic equities issue. And I don't know what that mechanism would be where we would be, have the legal right to say, you know what, you have to stay to your two-story current BP or BPR, BRP, BR zoning, and we're not going to give you relief. We can't. You know, if we give you relief, we're really going to have a problem. We've overextended ourselves. So, I don't know if necessarily the mechanism or the way we go about it in terms of device matters that much. I mean, the downside for the overlay is the delay. But in either event, the key is getting the information so that we understand what we're doing. And, you know, we talked about the parking study. We had, we really didn't get into it in great detail with the last round with the Form-Based Code. But I tell you, you know, there's suppositions that were presented about parking that, you know, many of us thought were very suspect. So, using the model of Bronxville, Pellum, Portchester, and imposing that on Newcastle, on Chappaqua, did not seem to make a whole lot of sense to a lot of us. We have a particular way that we live up here. We're further apart. Our public transportation system is nowhere near as robust as Down County in terms of buses and trains and, you know, the frequency. So, it's important to have a study or information that's based on real-life suppositions that we have here in Chappaqua. So, what do I mean by that? I mean that we really should recognize the way people live here. If you're in Pellum, if you're in Bronxville, and you need to go to the grocery store, you could walk. You can't do that here. It just doesn't work. We have a town which has got a topographical constraint. We have a very steep hill, so it really constrains people's walking up the hill. We have a nice downtown. We have a nice area downtown. But a lot of that, frankly, has been taken up by, you know, municipal activity and municipal buildings. So, I think any parking study should be one that is not something that's imposed or modeled from somewhere else where the lifestyle and the uses are different from what we know are experiences here. So, I held it.
So, sorry.
I have to.
So, anyway, does that help?
We moved into parking pretty quickly, didn't we?
I think it's interwoven. I really do.
To me, just to answer your question really quick on the, what would prevent anyone else from coming, to me, this parcel and the one immediately north of it are different from any other parcel in the downtown because, in the Chappaqua hamlet, because they are directly border a train track. They are very long and narrow. Every other parcel that I've at least looked at has a decent depth to it. To me, these parcels are very thin and long, and they really have issues in terms of development that I don't believe any of the other parcels have. And that, to me, is what differentiates them and why there are intricacies to developing there, such as, you know, you put an apartment, you don't want to have windows that can't open because they're directly over a train track. And if there's a, if there's an issue, a derailment, something, you can't have windows that open. Whereas, anywhere across the street or even closer toward the center of town don't necessarily have those issues because they're further from, there are further setbacks from the train track. So, to me, that's what differentiates these parcels from any other.
I agree.
And why I would argue the special permit makes sense there as opposed to anywhere else.
Well, I agree, but the legislation as proposed really doesn't make that argument. It makes the argument based on environmental issues and sustainability issues. And I would argue that that could be, that could be presented from any property owner in the district.
Well, I agree. I think it needs to be changed.
So, and also, even the geographic, I agree with you. I mean, I recognize that, and I think that's an issue. But each parcel's got its challenges. The issue that I think is fairly realistic, especially once the hamlet gets going, is that you really could see the amalgamation of lots with a developer coming and saying, I can get together with these four different owners. We all know that they're individual small property owners at this point, and very unlikely that you see any sort of substantial application at this point. But that was one of the things that we pointed out in here that we really thought was inappropriate, that you would limit property owners to just whatever is the current property owner. And an applicant could only come from a property owner, which we think is, frankly, not what we see an awful lot even with our applications now. Very often, you'll see a contract vendee coming in and making an application. So, it could be three or four of these coming in with a concept. So, I agree with you. There are definitely constraints for this. But I think the constraints actually make it more difficult for the applicant to expand beyond it. I'm not saying it's impossible. I think we need to be creative to do that.
Bob, I have to, I'm sorry, I have to interrupt this narrative because...
He's had it with me.
Not yet.
Not yet. It's much longer than usual.
This is not a difficult site. I'm sorry, it's not. It's the deepest site that we have downtown. It's the biggest site that we have in the hamlet. And if it's so difficult, why is the applicant able to get the equivalent density of fifty? I haven't done the math, but others have. I'm going to trust them for that. Fifty-six units per acre. That is, that's not a town density. That's an urban density. So, it's actually the easiest site to develop here. So, this narrative that there is some sort of a hardship is just not warranted. I'm sorry, it's just not. I mean, right, I'm an architect. I know how to do these things. It's not warranted.
Sorry, one second. We need to open that door for open meeting purposes. It can't stay closed.
How about that door?
I think they both have to be open. Thanks.
So, is, what, you're pointing that out to say that you don't think there's a need for a special permit? Because it's not such a...
No, I'm not saying that.
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to spell with that narrative because it keeps popping up, and it's just not true.
Okay.
It's just, mathematically, it's not true. The other thing that I'd like to sort of, I know it's maybe nuanced, but I think it's important because we talked about equity for the other property owners. And I kind of think that's, equity sounds like a social obligation, and that's up to you guys to figure out. I think it really, for what we worry about, it pertains more to the ability for everybody to actually develop their property. It's a planning problem, not a social equity problem. It's a planning problem. Planning challenge, planning issue, not a social equity one. So, I like to be careful about how we use those words here.
Appreciate that clarification.
And it appears to me that it's possible that it may be true that the exclusive attention being given to this particular site by, I guess, this special permit process, I don't know, might inhibit or make it more difficult for the other properties to be developed. I can't certify that. I mean, that's such a big unknown. It's impossible to tell, I think. But what is maybe the echo of what's happening here is maybe that not sufficient attention is being paid from a planning perspective to the other side of the street, which means the whole of the street. And if the ultimate objective is, I think, the improvement of all of North Greeley, because it's not just one side of the street, right? If it's a two-sided street, their property is on both sides, and there's an opportunity somehow to facilitate, somewhere, somehow, there are opportunities to facilitate both sides. If this piece of property is first up, great. That's terrific. I think it's a terrific thing. I mean, don't get me wrong. Don't get me wrong on that. So, I think that it's more a question for you guys to resolve. Once we say, I think we say, this is really a planning issue for you guys to address or not address, you address it today or address it two years from now, I think we just put it on the table and say, that's what we think you guys ought to be paying attention to in addition to this particular piece of property. And if it's a special permit that gets it done, I mean, I think that's fine. But I think we need to look at the text of the special permit because I got to tell you, and it may be evident from our memo, we think there are serious problems in here that need to be addressed.
Okay, good. That's why we're here.
Thank you.
So, I'd like to share some thoughts at this point. I'll piggybacking a little bit on what Tom has said. So, we referred a little bit here and there to the Form-Based Code and knowing that that's what a lot of people in the community did not want. So, that was pretty clear, but what's less clear is what people do want. And I'm sure you'd find a variety of opinions there. And I am just beginning to think that if you compare this to the Form-Based Code, we're going kind of from one extreme to the other. The Form-Based Code was a one-size-fits-all for the entire hamlet. And now, we've gone to looking at zoning for one parcel or two. And I just feel that we need a little bit more balance between the two. And as we talk about what is the difference between special permit, overlay zone, or floating zone, I think to what I said before, I'm more, I prefer a more holistic view to planning rather than piecemeal. And I'm beginning to feel that this is more of a piecemeal process that we're engaging in with this one special permit. And we'll be using our town resources to do parking studies, traffic studies, stormwater, sewage capacity studies, et cetera. So, in thinking about all of these zoning options, and this is still new to me, so you could correct me if I'm missing something, without wanting to slow down this application, would it make sense to look at a zoning vehicle, whether it's an overlay zone or a rezoning for North Greeley, and having this parcel be an overlay zone? I know that North Greeley is zoned for two stories, let's say. So, just as an example, and I'm not saying this is what we would do, but just as an example, if we would rezone North Greeley for three stories, depending on where the parcels are situated. But this particular one could be four stories. Would that work with just amending zoning legislation and then having an overlay zone for 50 North Greeley? Is that something that could work?
You still have to go through the process.
Yeah, there's going to be a process. I'm just trying to see what makes sense in terms of special permits or overlay zones or floating zones, and what makes sense in terms of planning itself, and trying to meld the two together to do something that makes sense for now.
So, I think that Sabrina and Jennifer can probably, are going to be able to give a much better answer to this than I can. But my intuition is that if you are going to create essentially a district which has a new zone, it may require further studies that you haven't done yet, that you don't have in hand. I mean, it's, I don't think you could just, I'm not sure you could just wave one and say, okay, this is what we're going to do. I think that there are broader studies that need to be done. It may take more time. You're going to end up, I think, in a public review process that's going to have more people involved in helping you make that decision. And this particular initiative that's in front of you right now is going to get sort of bound up in that process. I'm not sure that it's necessarily, the end result will necessarily be better or worse depending on the end result, whether you go one way or the other. I think that as long as you put protections of what you do now, not to restrict what you may want to do in the future, I think you probably are safe moving ahead with the notion that you're going to then address the other side of the street as a catch-up. Now, Sabrina and Jennifer maybe have some more technical and better ideas about that. But my guess is you could probably do it as long as you make sure you don't make it more difficult to do it downstream.
Yes, I think, I think this is...
Hi, everyone. I agree with what Tom said. I think that if you were to rezone North Greeley as a whole for three stories, allow this parcel and perhaps the one to the northeast overlay, what's going to happen from a secret perspective is the scope of your secret review is going to become much larger because you're going to have to study on a conceptual level what that means if all of North Greeley were to utilize the three stories. So, it's going to be a little bit more of an expanded secret study. Parking would still be something that would need to be addressed. Obviously, that's a hurdle for the current petitioner for the proposal of the law. But in concept, yes, I mean, that is a zoning mechanism that is an available concept. It would have some consequences, wouldn't it, as we just discussed?
So, and I apologize for being late. It was very hard to get out of the office today. So, I'm sorry for what I may have missed, but I'm very happy to be here to have these...
Just missed my very long introduction.
I'll watch it on YouTube.
Sure you will.
So, I'm happy we're having these discussions. I think it's really important for our town, and I appreciate the opportunity to have these discussions with you all. You know, I always enjoy when we have our joint meetings. So, I think that the idea of asking larger questions beyond 50 North Greeley is an important one. However, as we heard and as we assumed, it's a larger question that will take time and one that needs to be considered, certainly in light of what happened in this town over the last two years and how we want things to go forward over the coming several years. I don't think that, from my perspective, it needs to get in the way of decisions on 50 North Greeley. And as you've all seen from our memo, and we've spoken, had conversations about this a little bit, that there are two questions here. One is what's being proposed at North Greeley. Is that appropriate or not? And what are the asks? And how should we address those? And two, what is the mechanism to get that project approved or considered at least? I think uniformly on the Planning Board, and we don't have Dick here, but I think he would agree, what's being proposed, we don't love. The language as written today, the special permit approach and the specifics in it. And we're happy to talk about that. But I want to like, I want to separate that from the discussions on the two major asks for 50 North Greeley, which are height and parking, which are very important topics, and we should kind of have those conversations also. Obviously, they are interlinked, but, you know, there's process... Obviously, they are interlinked, um but you know, there's process, right, uh which is a big one also. Um that we all hear about, but now Tom cares about very much so is that, you know, the the proposal here sort of takes. Some authority away from the planning board, which um is a decision, right, uh we need to to uh make. Um so, we should think about those two, I think somewhat separately, right, the the proposal as it stands and the process by which to address the proposal. When it comes to the process. It's not, you know, I, it sounds like I missed some of it, but. The way this is written, i- it's, it's, it's really muddy and it isn't perfectly. Uh you know, zoning focused. And the question that has come up a bunch is that it's, you know, it talks a lot about the sustainability measures and I love the sustainability measures, love, and I wanna make sure that they exist here. It's thrown that they belong in this um.
At your leisure.
All right, I, you know, I just, I just don't know that they belong in this zoning text.
subpoena.
It's just kind of being late.
Yeah. As uh as proposed, um so. Um, that just feels like it needs to be reworked uh to an extent and um. You know, the other piece that we discussed uh last week, last Tuesday was, and I don't know if we have gotten answers yet on the question of the zoning district that this sits in is in the parking district. And if we, if there's a way to either in an as of right way or in as close to as of right as possible. Make it so that the parking issue is either eliminated or reduced because it's in the parking district, the parking district assumes that there are solutions to parking that are off site. That's the purpose of the parking district, if there are ways to use that to our benefit here to sort of, I think one of the issues off the table. We should consider that, that would be beneficial to. Sort of the complexity, to easing some of the complexity of this and addressing um some of the process questions as well.
I I think that um personally, I'm just exhausted talking about parking, um but that doesn't mean that it's not important.
Exhausted, I get it.
It's my wingman, all right. But I um, uh obviously, it's, it's critical to the. To the um ultimate developability of the entire corridor, right, everybody there. Um and it might be more important to people on one side of the street as opposed to people on the other side of the street because of the nature of those parcels are actually much more. Difficult to develop than the subject parcel we're talking about. Um, I would like to suggest that we have, we've talked enough about it that we sort of. Know what the issues are and we ought to wait for some facts. Some information from, you know, the traffic consultant, parking consultant to get those things in, I think there's some information that we could probably get right away. Uh in-house, I know that there's information that that you can, that I picked off online from documents that we have. As to how many parking spaces are now available, at least midday in during the week and on uh in the evenings during the week.
We have, we definitely have that information, I think it's part of the parking study that they did.
It is, we also know generally. How much retail development there is right now in the hamlet, I mean, if we don't know, we can go right up to talk to Josh and get the tax rules, you can find out just like that. Simple math, it seems to me, is, so what's our effective parking ratio? How many parking spaces we are being used for how much retail? I mean, that's like simple division and that by my calculation, it's somewhere between two and three per thousand. Which is great news, right? Um, a shopping center is typically six per thousand, but we have special circumstances here. I think that's great news, I just think that we need to get into that before we get into, okay, now what do we do about it because we don't know what it is yet. So, I guess I'm suggesting that there's time better spent talking about things that maybe. You know, we, we need to decide on or you guys need to decide on. Uh things that that have to do with policy, things that have to do with process and procedure until we get the facts on factual things.
Sounds good to me.
Yes. There's, one thing I'd like to add to this is. Um, current, the, the one thing we should be aware of is if, right now, we're saying either we're looking at one parcel or we looked at the whole hamlet. And now let's talk about a certain north corridor, right? I feel like when we go down that path, if there is an overflow or an implication on. A slightly wider district than that, then it, it just seems to me that. We will never have a perfect answer, so to me, it it's important for us to say, if it was a site, this was the implication, if it was North Greeley, this is the implication. And then maybe there are special breaks you put in to say, well, there is going to be X overflow in terms of parking and maybe there's an adjustment of. This is the nineteen eighties parking uh laws and it's changed because of whatever, so there's a correction there and so we've, we've accounted for that. But it, but to me, making the perfect sort of the, you know, the detriment to starting a process. Seems like not the best avenue from my perspective, I I totally agree, we need to understand if the entire hamlet was built out. At the scope it was built out with like, I don't know, four stories and had all this parking, what it, where's all this parking gonna flow, is it, you know? And and that's a good question to have, it's just. From what I understand, you're saying there's, there's a site that doesn't make sense, we really need to make, make some amends there, start somewhere and so the question is, you are going to have to make some assumptions. Um for North Greeley. Um and then, or or even smaller or a little bit, you know, so that's what I'm afraid of, that once we start looking at it, it just becomes bigger. And then the, the total was not fine too, so you know, we just need to account for that and my second question was on special permits before, you said there were. A bunch of them done before and so it's interesting to understand what was the implication if a special permit similar to this was granted. Um whether going forward, it had implications on what you had to build and we were stuck in a situation where we're like. They got a special permit, so what about us, you know, so, is there precedent there that we can look to, that's the other question.
I don't think there was ever a situation where they said they got one, what about us? Uh I think, you know, special permits are put there for a specific reason and uh I don't recall that ever happening and certainly. The town board has a, has a lot of leeway in terms of zoning and we can or cannot grant it to anyone basically if we're changing it. Um so there could be circumstances here, for instance, that, you know, there, because it's boarding the train tracks and it's gonna be a net zero building and. Certain things that we're allowing a special permit, but you just wanna put up a regular building, that may not be what we're striving to see. So, um I don't recall ever having an issue where they've said. Well, you did it over there, we wanna do it now here too. Um I think, I know there was one, the Conifer Building is a special permit, obviously. Is Chapco Crossing a special permit, no, that's, that's what they overlay zone. I forget which other ones, but there's a whole list of them in the, in the town code.
So, if, am I hearing correctly that it, it, when I, when I read your, when I read your memo. I had a lot of questions because I don't, this isn't my, my field of expertise and these are terms and words I didn't know and it seemed to me like. We were really gonna get stuck on a special permit versus an overlay zone, but now that we're sitting here, actually, that's not what I'm picking up from you guys. That actually there's some, some room there on your end to consider one versus the other. But that you're more concerned with some of the other language that's in the legislation and that that's more important, is, am I summarizing that correctly, am I, am I getting that right from everybody?
I don't know if it's more or less, but certainly it's uh, we have those concerns, but I I think um. I think Tom's right, there is certain, and I think Alad's uh talked about this also, there are certain threshold issues that really are the town board's uh decision. And really, to a certain extent, uh bless you. You guys really have to sort of give some sort of direction on that, so it really helps us, so for example, the bottom line is, you know, for example. Is sixty feet appropriate, appropriate for height? I mean, that's, you know, at some point, um we're not gonna make that decision, the town board has to make that decision. Is fifty-six per acre the appropriate density for this area of of uh the town? You know, you guys are gonna have to make that policy decision, is it um, is it absolutely necessary that you have to have retail? In this location or not, we know that. The elimination of retail diner, whatever it might be, uh gives us a different solution and probably a much easier solution than what we have right now. So, is that something that the, the town board has to see, wants to see in this, this, this zone, this, this area? So, we can't make that decision, ultimately, we can, we're throwing out, you know, it sounds like we're throwing out obstacles all the time, we're not, we're just throwing out issues to say, look. Because of this, you have a different threshold now for parking, you have a different threshold for other kinds of things. You know, when you go sixty feet, that, do we understand what that means? That doesn't mean that you can't have four stories, it's just that sixty, sixty feet is, is pretty high for four stories.
So, if, if, if I could to get back to, um I think your question, which is, all the stipulations that Bob just mentioned, which. Some of which are embedded in this text and some of which are sort of implied coming down the road from the applicant because they've talked about it, right? Um, I'm guessing that all those stipulations could be also in an overlay zone text. So, for me, it's what device do you use in order to. Move this project forward, right? But not just carte blanche, but move it forward in a way that has a process attached to it. That yields the best result for not just the applicant and not the best result for the town because you're gonna get neither if you try to get both. The optimum result for everybody. And so, if this is the device that moves it forward most quickly, I think that's great, but not at the expense of, right? Planning and design. And I think that's my primary concern, if you guys decide you wanna do an overlay zone, I'm all for it, whatever zoning device you guys decide to use.
Okay.
That's your prerogative, right? I mean, you know. Yield to Caesar, right, so that's where we are and that's fine, that's the way it's supposed to work.
I, I don't. I don't know that I like that comparison, yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
Somebody write that down, I don't. Memorialize. So, uh, I mean, I, I'm, I'm all for using whatever devices gets it done and gets it done well.
Okay.
And if this is the one, I'm good with it, but then we need to sort of make sure it's done well.
So, I, I have kind of a. Maybe like remedial question about um. If and how does a special permit process vary from, say, an overlay zone?
I'm not going to.
I, I don't know that we need to talk, we can.
If they're telling.
Talk about that probably offline.
But I don't know if they're telling us that the mechanism that's used is on us, I feel like we all need to have the same understanding of the. Process and.
Just pardon me? It, it may be helpful to think in terms of where you want us. What you're trying, the board is trying to accomplish on North Greeley, I, I've heard this board and prior town boards talk about. Their desire, desire to make distinctions between the east side and the west side of North Greeley. Um, the, the lots on the east side of North Greeley are tiny, most of them, if you take the right eight of the, I'm sorry, the Verizon building up to the post office. They're about a tenth of an acre each, one of them is a little bit bigger.
Right.
If you combined all of them, you would just about be, be slightly bigger than the fifty North Greeley property, so that's a big difference. In terms of what you're dealing with, the ones on the east side of the street back onto an existing townhouse development. So again, I know this board has wanted to make distinctions uh around those existing conditions. And if the board is still inclined to do that, I'd suggest that an overlay may not be the best approach.
Okay, so an overlay is.
Because an overlay tends to be homogeneous in terms of its application, the town only has three overlay, correct me if I'm wrong, Sabrina and Jen, but. We only have three overlay districts in the whole town, one's Chapco Crossing, one's an environmental overlay. And one's the Millwood Design Center, design. Then that was.
You have the multifamily Chapco and multifamily.
Lots floating, oh, that's right, that's a floating.
Yeah, those are floatings, but overlays are.
So, there aren't many of them and they, they tend to be.
Much bigger than.
Good when you want the same thing in, in an area.
So, it's kind of the size.
Less good to draw fine distinctions within a zone.
Okay, so that, that answers my question, that it's, it's just really about the, the sky, the size of the.
And I, I think, for example, uh going back to Lisa's earlier observation about this particular parcel, as opposed to what we have now in the opening of this, this legislation. Those are the kinds of things I think that should be put in that opening paragraph that says, in addition to the things that you identified. Um, you know, whatever constraints it has, it's, it's kinda unique because I think it's in two different districts and this kinda stuff. But also, it's distinct from the east side, I mean, if you're going to, if you're going to make policy, I would make it on that basis, I mean, we sort of made the observation, we didn't mean it to be flip. But really, to a large extent, a certain extent. Some of the stuff contained in the proposed legislation is, is lifestyle and we, we sort of like, it's, it's sort of like a real estate brochure.
Yeah.
You know, you don't legislate that or put it in zoning, but what you do put in zoning to say is specifically. You want the east side to sort of stay that way for the reasons that Ed just articulated, it's up against a residential district on the train track. It's, it's, you know, if, if you go three, four stories on that side, you're really gonna impact, you know, the condominium units up there. So I think those are the kinds of things to put in here to, to give you guys, all of us. Uh, not just the cover, but the reasoning and the basis for what we're doing for this parcel and the next parcel up north.
But that's like what I was, what I was talking about, when I said maybe we do a zoning amendment for North Greeley.
Yep.
And a special permit for fifty North Greeley.
I mean, it seems to me that.
Um, but, but you know, then we get back to all of the implications of that and having a lengthy secret process, but I, I think we could plan for that. And you know, get some basic facts and figures to sort of project what the parking and traffic might be if we do something like that. While still proceeding with the, with the application.
Well, it sounds like we need to take the legislative issues into account first, it sounds like we need to. Figure out the, are we doing? Let's just say for argument's sake, special permit, okay, we all decided special permit, now knowing that that's how the direction we wanna proceed. How do we account for the planning board's issues with the legislation that account for now the fact that we're moving forward as a special permit?
So, I'd like to make a recommendation, what is in the special permit specifically, right? Uh first of all, I would not put in a special permit designation for one piece of property, what you can't do on another piece of property, I just.
I wouldn't say that I can't, but.
Well, I don't think, the language, I don't, I wouldn't make the distinction because it. It stigmatizes the other side of the street and it sort of casts a pall.
I don't think it stigmatizes.
It casts a pall on it because the town is declaring that they don't want to develop on the other side.
I would say, it was just a description of, of the differences.
Okay. I disagree, but we can get past that. Um, I think that what is most important is the four stories, right? What else is important? Honestly, what else is important in this special permit? Uh, uh legislation, um lifestyle stuff, no. Parking, maybe, but we'll hold on that until we understand what the parking is going to be, right? Um, the um notion that this has a, the net uh zero um. Um carbon thing, I think that's all right. I'm not sure that belongs in a, in a zoning text, I think that's belongs someplace else, I don't think you need that as justification for the special permit.
Okay.
I've put in there only what you need is justification for the special permit, instead of attaching all sorts of other conditions and stipulations. That then make it maybe more difficult for somebody to want to append that special district, come and appeal to make that special district part of, then you have to rewrite the text, I don't know.
Well, I would argue though, just getting back to the environmental part of it. On the exact same site with the exact same building, if it was fossil fuel, you know, completely not environmentally sensitive. I don't know that I would be as excited about that project as I am knowing that it can be. That it's a net zero building, that it can be, that it's, because it's mass timber, it can be built off site, so the, the impact on our town. In terms of putting this up, doesn't mean that our merchants are now gonna be sitting with construction for two years. That most of it is assembled off site and brought over with a crane and just kind of stuck down and it really. Limits the, the impact on our town, I think if those weren't included, I wouldn't be as excited. To build a four story building that was completely, you know, using oil and everything else, so I actually do think it should be in that.
I think those are all. I think that those are all great things, but you're, the premise you're making is that that wouldn't happen without it in the zoning text. And from everything I've heard from the applicant or the applicant's represent, uh representative, is that this is, this is something. is that this is this is something that he really wants to do.
But 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 I I I think the point that you just raised Lisa is is a really good one and and it's a question that I was going to ask, right? Because it it also gets a little bit to Holly's question about what is the difference in overlay district and and a special permit? An overlay district just rewrites what the zoning is and then that's what's allowed as of right, a special permit is there's the zoning that's in place, that's the as of right that today is two stories, right, uh uh on this specific site? And then there's a special permit which says you can have these additional reliefs from zoning, whatever they may be, in exchange for X, Y, and Z.
Do best.
And there's a policy decision as to what are the, what do we get, trying to get in place, and it actually is very relevant because this property owner and this developer, right, it's two different entities, right, the property owner and the developer here are 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 looking to do a bunch of really awesome things, but life happens and they may sell the property tomorrow. And so if we don't put in place um what we wanna get out of this, then we may not get out, get get that same thing out of it.
That makes sense.
Yes, that's very true.
Right, and so and so the special permit there there is, I mean the the word special exists for a reason. It's because there there is something unique that we're, that there is a little bit of a a a quid pro quo, like we we're willing to give up something in exchange for something else that we want as a town, and that could be any number of things. And so the 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 sustainability question, or the height question, or the parking question, or the process question, or any other possible things that are being proposed here, the affordable housing question, right, they're proposing twelve percent. Our town requirement is ten percent, they're proposing above and beyond, but the next guy may not do that. So if we wanna give an extra story of height, which I think would be awesome for more housing, more affordable housing, more green measures, then we should think about how, what's the best way to do that? Um you know, the specificity of the language and and how it's tailored to this site specifically, but might apply to other sites, that's where we kind of got tripped up. But I I think the special permit can be, and especially if we're only talking about one site, um and not two sites, and not the east side, and not something else, the special permit makes to me much more sense um for one site. This site and um.
When you say one site, you mean just fifty or are you including the one north?
Just fifty.
Just fifty.
Okay.
The one north, I don't know, I don't know anything about it, I don't know if it could even, you know, to Tom's point, the language as written
Can you build that there?
Covers the side of the north, but we have no idea if they can meet any of these requirements or would want to, or if it's even feasible. You know, it's much, much, much different site, you know, just, you know, from a meeting bounds, it's so much longer and narrower.
That is a difficult site.
Right.
And that was one of our concerns, that by grouping it, we might be imposing standards on the next guy, the next lot, the next parcel
That it could never meet.
Well, that's a good point.
Right.
Right.
That we can't meet, that they couldn't meet, so that would really frustrate again North Greeley's development.
Is there a reason to include two, two of them in it when there's not a representative for the other property even asking?
I mean, there could be if we decide that we'd be willing, just like any zoning. If we decide that we would be willing to give all these things on that site as well, it allows then the owner of that property to know, okay, well, this is now my zoning, I can build let's say four stories if I have the environmental, if I have twelve percent affordable housing, if I, you know, have all these things in place. So it's just another mechanism of zoning, much like it is anywhere else.
But it's not coming from the applicant?
No, it's not.
Okay, it's not because.
So um I'm convinced by you all, not that I need to be convinced, but I'm convinced by you all that this uh notion of getting the uh green building technology in there is a good thing.
Yes, and I do think I like to see that, so I wanna, I from my perspective, I really wanna make sure that something happens on North Greeley.
Yep.
And I really love all of the green aspects of it. I just wanna make sure that we're not looking too narrowly and hamstringing anybody else for the future. Cause to some degree, I'm kind of picturing like in the movie Up, and you know, everything grows around and there's this little tiny house in the middle. I don't want us to make the east side doomed to that by a decision we make right now on one property, so that's kind of the, when you talk about from a planning perspective.
Right.
That I wanna make sure that we don't lose that picture either.
I'm also persuaded uh with Elad's concept uh that we just look at this one particular parcel. We have an application, just look at the one application.
I do.
Yes.
And and I think that will alleviate some of the concerns that are that are in here.
Okay.
Totally.
And and if we could.
And if we can do that, I mean, I I think that makes great sense, and I think what it comes down to is as Elad said, it's quid proposed, and we just have to make sure that, you know, whatever's being asked and what is being given comes out in balance and we're not, we're not out of balance. And that we still need that information, but I I think this makes great sense.
Sure, we just answered two questions.
The the
The one last thing I would say is on the green technologies and if you if you're gonna put that in and we should totally put that in, um you know, it needs to have some sort of like the way it reads right now, it doesn't have any kind of reporting mechanism or anything that is actually holding them. It it's a little more.
Or standard.
Exactly, I mean, it 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 will be lead certif, you know, cert, gold certified, or or it doesn't have to be or equivalent. You know, we need to be able to demand certain standards. I don't know if we're actually talking to it, or I'm not, I'm just using the word lead, there's like a hundred different ways to get there today.
Right.
But you know, those, that's the kind of stuff we should ask for maybe.
So I think two things, I think first, it and it might make sense to get a smaller group of the planning board and the town board together to wordsmith the actual verbiage in the legislation. Um to, you know, incorporate all these things we've discussed and then bring it back to the greater boards, I just think it's gonna be impossible to do with the two full boards together. So I think that's important and we should set up a time to do that and pick who you wanna do that. Um the other thing, and you asked it before, I just wanted to put it out there. I actually think that um having retail or some kind of commercial space is very important. Because one of the concepts in the comprehensive plan was not just to increase our housing stock, was also to bring vitality to the hamlets and you have, let's say, fifty new units. That's not bringing vitality, yeah, those fifty people might be in town, but what we really wanna do is actually bring people from the rest of town and other towns downtown, that's how you're gonna increase vitality. And a way to do that, if we had, for instance, a fabulous diner or a great commercial, you know, store, whatever it is, that really is gonna incentivize people to come down and and even bring people to that end of North Greeley, that can even revitalize not only the hamlet but the street as well. And I've heard from numerous, numerous residents as well as merchants, that something like a diner that has lunch service and really can bring kids and families and everyone else is something that would really be welcome in town, which is why it's proposed. That being said, does the size necessarily need to be what was initially proposed? No, it could be a little smaller, as and we've seen from the Chapacua diner that used to be there, that that was very popular, did very well. And so we know in terms of sizing that that can actually work. So if that even impacted parking and traffic, things like that, I think the developer would be willing to work to change the size of that, but in my view, that commercial slash retail component is very important to bring the vitality into town.
Can I just, just from a planning perspective, uh hu- one hundred percent, uh commercial at the ground floor at this location along North Greeley makes all the sense in the world. And um it would be a mistake from my perspective to eliminate it in service of meeting a parking requirement that is decades old.
I'm I'm just concerned about promising a diner, I don't know the extent to which we can control what kind of restaurant comes in there. Um we've seen at Chapacua Crossing what trouble they've had attracting certain restaurants that they wanted. We could certainly say we want a diner, I know that the applicant is going to do their best to get that, but I'd be a little bit um hesitant to promise that to 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 the community.
No, that's true. But we can say a restaurant space.
We would, we would like that.
Commercial retail.
And we'd like a diner.
Right, we we definitely would. I th- I think that would be fantastic, but.
I I would say, I mean, whatever it is, I mean, I I can't agree more that that is something that we need to see, the applicant wants that. I think it makes great um great sense. But I think we have to recognize that it comes with, potentially, until we have the information, it comes with some cost that may cause other issues and friction somewhere else. Specifically, you know, uh we've talked about it at length, till we have that parking information, we need to know what that means. Because that, under our code, uh people are just throwing it out 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 the window at this point, but I'm not so sure we can just throw it out the window without information.
So I I imagine that the that the uh owner is going to work in complete good faith to get a restaurant diner, however it gets uh for as as long as he can. And he may be successful, could very well be successful, but it could be one day where it's a vacant long enough that nobody wants a vacant space and then there's an appeal to the town, there's a way to sort of deal with that.
Right, right.
So I think it's a great goal and I think that we ought to be pursuing it. I don't know the extent to which you wanna legislate it, uh you know, I'm not the zoning guy, but.
Right, we can figure that out.
If I may, um the the way the text reads right now, it's any retail use permitted in that zone. It's not diner, it's not necessarily a restaurant. The applicant is going to, now build it, they'd say, to that specification, but the zoning doesn't mandate it.
Well, okay, we can talk about it if there are other ways to amend that.
Right.
All right, so I think um this has been really helpful, I think all these people are really not here to listen to us anymore. So I think we came to a few actually great conclusions today, first that I believe we're saying yes, special use permit uh with environmental language in there, looking at the one site. And we're going to get a small group together, you'll get back to me, to really look at the the language in the legislation, kind of wordsmith that a bit.
With real standards.
There there is.
And that we want commercial. Ed?
Yeah, if I may, Ed, let me suggest that um my office and Sabrina um work together on taking what was said tonight and generating a first cut and bring that back to the small group, does that make sense?
Yep. Sure.
Yes, that's great.
Yes.
So there.
Love that.
Yes.
Thank you. We're welcoming all the words.
We welcome back.
So uh bef- before we um before we break up, uh getting back to your excellent list, there was one that we really didn't get to, which was sort of the procedures of application and review. And we probably don't have time for that tonight, but I think that's a, I think that's a real serious thing we ought to be taking a look at.
Maybe take thirty seconds and say like your concern with the, it's it's like the last line in in the proposed legislation. Uh if that's okay, I just think that it is an important piece, I know it's particularly.
I think this is the same, uh I think I'm, I was looking for the same answer when I asked about the process and how it might different differ, so I'd actually like to hear what you think.
So um this particular special permit text, unless I'm mistaken, in our experience, and I think it's typical for these kinds of things, that um the town board retains authority in these things and planning, the planning board is consulted, but it's ultimately, because it's a special permit, it's a special zoning thing, so you guys do it, right? I, there's something about these processes that, which I think that is for me helpful to remember, is that there is a, there's there's what you build, and then there's how you build it. And the what you build is like the policy stuff, you know, the zoning stuff. We want four stories, we want all these special attributes and that makes a special permit, that's our vision, is the use of this thing. Then there is the design of it, and the design of it is the execution of that policy, right? So and that to me is not the province, for me, that's not the province of a town board, that's a province of a planning board, people who do this for a living and have the experience of actually knowing what to look for and the principles of town planning and how to make it sort of all come together. In between the policy and the design is something called planning, right? And I think that we should be working together on the planning of it like we are now. But I think that when it comes time for the special, not the special, but for the typical site plan approval, review and approval, I think it ought to go through the planning board. I really think that it ought to be in the planning board's hands to do that. And so, I mean, that's my thirty-second pitch, and we can come back to that some other time.
I'll just throw this out, can it be done jointly?
Well, the reviews can be done jointly, but the final, it's, I don't know if you can have a ten-person vote on an application. That would be truly jointly, I think it needs to be in the hands of one board versus the other. And I think it ought to be under the authority of the planning board because we're constituted to do that. And we've demonstrated perfectly well that we could do it perfectly well. You haven't seen yet the neighborhood that's being built up there because it's not built yet, but it's in process. We designed that, right? It used to be just a cluster of buildings with like garages, we turned it into a real neighborhood with neighborhood streets. This is before Toll Brothers came in. And Toll Brothers arrived and they bought the property and they bought that site plan, they had no objections to it. And they're the um premier home builders. I'm making a, obviously an advertisement for our
But that was part of a whole preliminary development concept plan, like I don't know
What's the difference?
We've ever done anything like that before.
But the outcome is, was good.
No, the outcome was definitely good.
Yeah, and the outcome can be good.
Well, I'd say, I'd say that.
I don't mean to extend the statement, I'm kidding.
Don't go to the bad yet.
I I say that the legislation as proposed takes authority away from the planning board, and that's just something that should be considered, right? I mean, it's it's not just to be taken as written and we should think about it and what is the proper.
I don't disagree, I don't disagree.
Understood, let's talk about it.
Yeah, I'm certainly comfortable with the policy aspect and planning aspect, and I think we should think about what what you said.
Definitely.
Yeah, we will definitely talk about that.
Right, the poll.
Perfect, all right.
Thank you.
On to your next project.
So yes, so uh can I have a motion to uh adjourn our joint meeting?
Motion to adjourn our joint meeting. A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we need a motion to adjourn our special meeting as well?
I'll move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you guys again.
Thank you very much.